I've got seven o'clock on the nose. We'll bring our meeting to order. If you will, Ms. Ray, please call Row of Counsel.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Alex Heath.
Present.
The Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
The Honorable Samantha Hudson.
Present.
The Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
And the Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. If everyone that can, please stand for the invocation by Pastor Fowler. Please come forward, Pastor. Thank you so much.
Amen. Let us pray. All wise and loving God, we thank you, Lord, for this day that you've made. And we thank you, God, for our assembly here tonight, Lord God, to do the work of the city of Fairburn. We thank you, Lord God, for the work that you've given our hands, our heart, and our mind to do, God, and may all that we do and all that we say bring glory and honor to your name. Bless our time together, bless this council, Lord God, bless our mayor, Lord God, speak wisdom to their heart, God, speak love into their spirit, and, Lord God, let us have a productive and efficient meeting, Lord God, to your glory and to your honor. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, no proclamations. Members of council, can I entertain a motion to adopt the city council agenda as printed?
So moved.
That's second.
Second.
Motion been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next, we'll have public comment. Thirty minutes shall be available for public comment. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. However, a speaker may transfer his or her time to three minutes to another speaker, but no speaker should speak for more than six minutes. Ms. Ray, how many speakers we have?
We have six.
We have six, okay, so we're still at the three-minute interval. And all issues raised at this time will be sent to the city administrator for further review and responses. Thank you. Go ahead and call up our speaker.
Ernie Brooks.
Hello again, y'all.
Hello.
I have missed out on the bulletin that usually comes with your utility bill. I don't know about y'all, the little, you know, very colorful newsletter. The last two utility bills, it has not been inserted in my envelope, and I know there was some discussion in the prior meetings about, you know, the new way to communicate. There was some discussion about actually charging a membership fee. And then it was, no, we're not going to charge. And I thought, oh, maybe I missed out. And I went to the website, and I did see some things. There was a newsletter performance, open rates, and then click-through rates, and an unsubscribe rate. And I thought, well, I've missed out. How do I get to the newsletter? So it might just be someone forgot to stuff it in my utility bill. But I'd like to share a story with you about Confucius. He was not a prophet. He was not a monk. He was an intergovernmental person who traveled in China many years ago. And in his travels with his group, he came across a woman crying on a grave. And he sent one of his students to ask her why she was so bereaved. And he came back and told Confucius that her father-in-law was killed by a tiger, her husband was killed by a tiger, and now she had buried her son, who was killed by a tiger. And Confucius told his students, they could live in the village, but where it's protected, but they have a government that is tyrannical, that it is better to live free where the threat of being killed by a tiger is in your face. Now, if you don't believe this story, Google it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Well, hold on, sir. Did he sign up?
What is his name?
Yes, sir, did you sign up? Please speak.
No, your name is not on the list.
No, sir, I unfortunately passed our protocol. You called in? No? No? Our protocol is that you sign up. I'm sorry, sir. In this case, normally, I thought you just assumed that you signed up.
Did he? Call him into the clerk's office. If he called in in the clerk's office, he should be able to.
Hold on, ma'am, I'm running. He has a presentation in this case. In the case, no, no presentation in this case, sir. Our agenda is printing in this case. Did you get a call from? Okay, sir, I'm sorry, unfortunately, I don't have record that you called in. I'm sorry, Pastor. But at the next meeting, we'll make sure that that's part of it. I apologize. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This letter is addressed to Mayor and Council, and it reads, "Good evening, Mayor and Council. The past year of council meetings has been difficult. We've all witnessed an increase in negativity and conflict that has often overshadowed the important work we are here to do. While spirited debate is a natural part of our democracy, democratic process, the level of discord becomes counterproductive and does not serve our community's best interests. Having been a member of this council, I believe we must acknowledge this reality and commit to a better way moving forward. We must shift the tone of discussions from one of conflict to one of collaboration. Our community deserves a mayor and council that can respectfully disagree without being disagreeable. The mayor announced that I resigned my council seat to run for mayor. That is true, and I made a commitment that it would be a strong and positive campaign. With that being said, it has come to my attention that the integrity of this council has been called into question. I have been informed by multiple people in this community that receive an undisclosed email that a deflamatory email campaign originating from within this dais has been launched against me. The email was immediately forwarded to me and phone calls to me as well. This act is nothing but a politically motivated strategy that highlights the desperation of those that see the strength of my supporters. This is concerning because it shows fear and weak leadership. It gives no hope to people that positive change is coming. There's a saying, and I quote, "To throw the rock and hide the hand," unquote, that describes people who causes trouble, harm, spread rumors, but then pretend to be innocent or not involved. That in itself is about a lack of accountability and a cowardly way of causing a problem. My record and my character speaks for themselves. This is a clear attempt to distract from the real issues that matter to the voters. I will not engage in these malicious attacks, and I'm confident the public will see this for the dirty politricks that it is. At the request of the mayor, both the attorney and to the attorney Starkey, they receive a comprehensive document from my attorney addressing this matter. This evidence, which is not included in a recent email sent to the public, confirms my innocence and officially closes the case."
Thank you, sir. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please provide legal counsel with this evidence provided from my attorney to this mayor without any communication to this body at all. And now that that's said, I will move on to other wonderful things. So I'm enjoying talking to the citizens because we're talking about issues that they are confronted with, issues of the high utility bills. And the question, one question came out, how can one person in one community receive verbal communication from this administration that the reason that their bills were quadruple because of an error made here? Only shared with one person, but not everybody that was experiencing it. That's alarming and concerning to me. Water pressures. We've been talking about water pressures for years. And I was talking to the senior citizens on Friday, and we talked about that. Guess what? We already proved that we can increase those pressures by putting in those pumps throughout the city. It's proven. So why aren't we doing that? I asked during the budget process, what are the projects that these departments are doing? In particular, let's talk about the water department. Why are they just dealing with water meter replacements that's being done by an outside entity when we have the ability to do the things we need to do by tracking and taking care of things we need to take care of here in the city of Fairburn? Prime example, even at the beginning of this administration, the failed fire hydrant right downtown, when we had that fire, it still hasn't been resolved. The end of this, the end of the previous administration, we received acknowledgements of being one of the top ten safest cities in Georgia. I was proud of that. That comes from the safewise.com. I urge you all to go look at it. Guess what? We're not on the top ten, top twenty-five, we're not even showing up at all there. Why is that? That needs to be investigated. We need to know why we fell from a top-ten city during this administration down to not even being on map at all. That's alarming to me. I also asked for the formula for the officers, knowing that as the census increase, we have more citizens, there's a formula that decides how many officers we should have here in the city of Fairburn. To this date, I still have not received that. And last, within ten seconds, when do we start doing rededication and changing plaques on Frankie Arnold and also Betty Hannah's areas?
Thank you, sir.
When I sat on council.
Thank you, sir, your time is up, sir, I appreciate you.
Forrest, Mr. Mayor.
Next speaker.
First, I'd like to get clarification from Mr. Whitmore. What did you want me to do with these forms again?
I asked you to pass one to everyone sitting on there at dais, showing that this was sent to Mayor Avery. Nobody on that dais knows about it, and the date was July of last year.
Next speaker.
The next speaker is going to be Mr. Lee Walton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lee Walton, forty-three, Green Street.
Good evening.
With the number of times I've talked about the courthouse, you've probably guessed that I am a downtown resident. Always and every time encouraging you to continue progress on the courthouse. But tonight, as a downtown resident, I want to talk about Fuego Fest that happened last Friday night, and I want to thank you for it because it was a loud but wonderful event, wonderfully diverse, energy, youth, excitement. I was kind of amazed, as I was walking around it, that I was in Little Fairburn, Georgia. So simply thank you for sponsoring that. There were a lot of vendors there, too, so maybe the numbers work out so that it's not, you know, purely a city-funded event. I don't know the specifics on that, but it just struck me as very positive and encouraging in a time when all the news that we see is not very positive and encouraging. So I appreciate that.
The next speaker is Antavia Benson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
And residents of Fairburn. You guys know I'm wordy, so I thought I would stick to the sheet of paper this time. On October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, a proposal was formally submitted to the city of Fairburn for the development of a gas station at one-oh-one Durham Lake Parkway. While a gas station use is permitted at one-oh-one Durham Lake Parkway, numerous residents voiced their concerns regarding the specific proposal during the planning and zoning meeting held on Tuesday, September second. In response to these concerns, the developer's attorney consented to review alternative solutions. The Durham Lakes POA Board subsequently provided contact details and involved our legal team. However, discussions indicated that although some building design and operations modifications could be considered, the facility would continue to operate as the gas station as proposed. We understand and share the residents' questions and concerns about community health and safety. We ask that all residents learn more about this specific proposal and get involved in collaboration with both local and city government. We kindly request that you share your comments to the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and that you attend, preferably in person, the planning and zoning meeting when the submittal returns and invite your neighbors and supporters to join you. Thank you for staying engaged. Thank you for staying vigilant, and know that your voice still counts. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Ryan Trotter. That gave Mr. Whitmore his time, so the next speaker is Lawrence Bryant. Mr. Lawrence Bryant. No other speakers there.
All right, at this point, we're going. Members of council, we have before you the minutes of our last city council meeting that commenced, and can you please, September eighth, twenty-twenty-five, can I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is a public hearing for the capital improvement element impact fee transmittal. The recommendation is for Mayor and Council to approve a resolution to transmit the draft capital improvements element, the CIE, to the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for mandatory review as required under the Georgia Development Impact Fee Act, OCGA subsection thirty-six dash seventy-one dash one, planning and zoning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
When the tall people get the mic, it's hard to adjust it. No shade to nobody but him. Thank you. The item before you is the capital improvement element. It is step one of us establishing or reviewing the possibility of establishing an impact fee program. We mentioned this months ago. The process to population growth analysis is very detailed, and that takes a great deal of time. We've had a great consultant firm that's been working with us to make sure all of the required documents are there, so now we are presenting that item to you. Luckily for all of us, we're building off a lot of good work that's already been done. So the Parks Master Plan, the comprehensive plan that is currently under review, all of those items help build toward this document. The CIE is required for cities who are interested in an impact fee program is step one, and it allows you to begin that process of establishing the program. Impact fees for the general public or fees collected for new development to fund public facilities needed because of growth. They all have limitations. You cannot use to fix things, you cannot use for operations or maintenance, only for new capacity. We have two categories that we were reviewing, parks and rec and public safety. There's a great deal of information about growth forecasting, population, so anyone who's interested in seeing population projections and things of that nature related to the city of Fairburn, this is a great resource. In particular, as it relates to parks and rec, there are items that are identified like an amphitheater, rec center, skating rink, splash pad, dog park, tennis court, pickleball, et cetera. There are roughly seventy-one million dollars in projects, all with significant impact fee eligibility. So this is a new fee that new developers who are coming to the city would have to pay, and that would help to fund a lot of these items. If you recall, the Parks Master Plan had a significant amount of great items, but we were looking for resources to fund that. This is a possibility to help get some of those things moving forward. We also included public safety, police and fire. Some of those projects include the public safety facilities, the fleet shop, heavy equipment. There's some slight changes to the document that's presented. There were two items that the police department was able to discuss through to add in, that is the, some training facilities and also a command center, but I will let the subject matter experts talk about exactly what that is. But again, I think this is an invaluable resource. This is something that I can tell you from speaking with developers. A lot of them, the first question they ask is, how much are your impact fees? And I have to tell them, we don't have any right now. We're working on it, but we don't have any right now. So the sooner we can get this document transmitted to the state agencies to begin the review, the sooner we can begin the process of actually drafting the ordinance, what you deem the appropriate fees are, and starting that process. And hopefully, by the end of this year, at the latest, early next year, we'll have it adopted, so we can start collecting these fees. But if you have any particular questions, I'm available, and the consultant page is here, and she can also answer any questions. And we also have folks from public safety, fire chief, police chief, and parks and rec who can answer the subject matter questions.
Okay. I'm going to do the open a public hearing right now. Members of council, excuse me, in this case, can I entertain a motion to open a public hearing with this capital improvement element impact fee transmittal?
So moved. Second.
Motion is made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask anyone that wish to speak in support of this item, please come forward. Come on up to the mic, sir.
Good evening again.
Hey, sir.
Impact fees are something I have some experience with. They are a critical tool in the local government toolbox these days in order to accomplish what local government needs to accomplish. Funding is difficult, you know this, so it's a tool that many of the surrounding area communities are using, have been using for some time. It's getting to the point where, exactly as Ms. Brookins said, it's surprising to developers when there's not impact fees in place. So for a whole lot of reasons, I'm here to speak in favor of, encourage, and definitely promote the process going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in support of this item?
I just want to let you guys know that I also supported. I stood up when it was first brought to you in support of this impact fee. As you know, it just makes all the sense. I do have a question. My question is, who is the advisory, the impact fee advisory committee on that council board or whatever it is? Just curious.
Great question. Next, anyone else? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, definitely in favor of the impact fees. As we know, we may go into a financial crunch depending on what's going to be happening coming out of the Gold Dome, and having that impact fee will definitely help with a lot of the initiatives that we've been talking about for a long time, or I'll say, I've been talking about for a long time. Community center, an auditorium, walking trail. Well, with those impact fees, it's going to help offset that altogether. So yes, I am definitely in favor of it, along with the three things I mentioned and the other things that Ms. Brookins has already identified as potential items that we can use those impact fees to as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I echo what's been said, but I also want to include that there have been a number of people looking at the comprehensive plan and have said, this is a great idea, how do we fund it? And have also said, we're bringing in new businesses. If they're here to extract our dollars, they need to put something into it. This would be a very good legal way to ensure that that happens.
Anyone else wish to speak in support of this item? Okay, is there anyone that wish to speak in opposition of this item? Seeing none, can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Members of council, you have before you a capital improvement element impact fee transmittal. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is made and properly, so any questions or comments by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Yes, Ms. Brookins, could you just talk a little bit about the process? Why the letter of transmittal? To whom the letter is being addressed? And why?
So all cities who are interested in doing an impact fee study have to transmit it to the state, DCA, I believe it's also the Atlanta Regional Commission, but Paige can correct me on that, but I believe DCA is a part of that process. And they review it to make sure that it's in compliant with all state regulations. Because it's also a part of our comprehensive plan, I may come back before you if we get word back that our comprehensive plan is eligible for adoption, then we would have to revise it to make sure that this document is also included as a part of it. But for the initial transmittal, there's a resolution that council has to add to, and it's not saying that it's approved, but it's saying that you give us the authority to transmit it to the state to ensure it complies with all of their regulations.
And what's the timing of this transmittal and the transmittal of the comprehensive plan?
So the comprehensive plan has already been set off. DCA only had a couple comments. We've addressed those comments, and we're waiting for the word back to say that we can actually adopt it. The timeline for the comprehensive plan adoption would be late October. This requires a little bit more time because this is the first time we're doing it, so I believe there's a sixty-day window that is required for that review.
And in your development of this plan, you did review other cities that have gone through this process and adopted the impact fees?
So the great part about this entire process is typically, most municipalities, I would say, use the same consultant because there are not many consultants that do this. This is a very specific level of expert, and Paige and their team has done a fantastic job of pulling this together. They've done it for all of the cities that I know of in the surrounding areas, like they're working on Fayetteville's, I believe they also work with Peachtree City. So they have expert knowledge of how to do these, how to do them effectively, how to get them approved, and how to train staff to actually implement it.
And I would totally agree with you. I had an opportunity to see the consultant in work, at work, when they were working with the city of Savannah some three years ago. And it was at that time that I gained an in-depth knowledge of the impact fees and what impact that could have on our city. So I am glad to see that it is now before us, better late than never. Didn't understand why it took, you know, three years to get here, but really appreciate that. And I appreciate your comment that you may come back to us so that the comprehensive plan and the capital improvements elements are aligned. So thank you so much for that, and please do keep us posted.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to just congratulate you.
I would like to just congratulate, first and foremost, one of our citizens who, back in 2023, brought it to my attention about the impact fee. Frankly, I'd never heard of it before. And I immediately called our top-notch administration department to let them know about it. And I want to thank you, Mr. Phillips, for taking the reins on this because it was definitely a process to get to this point, and we're in 2025. So thank you. I congratulate you. Thank you for taking this and making it come to fruition and passing the ball to planning and zoning, and thanking you for being able to do this in planning and zoning. So, great deal.
And I just want to mention again, thank you so much again, Ms. Brookins and Mr. City Administrator for your job. Well done. This actually was brought up in my last administration, actually in 2015, I believe. And we were in the midst of trying to actually, it already passed, in this case, of fees to acquire Duncan Park and all this construction. And so with the foresight as relates to a lot of construction that was going to actually commence. And I said, which it did, actually during my latter, latter part of my second administration, as well as the first part of Mayor Hurst's administration. And so again, again, we came back, we talked about this, and so Ms. Davis' timing was perfect when we brought it up. So again, I'm very happy because again, this is nothing new. It's something that we're going to benefit again. It's going to pay for so many different services. And so again, speaking of that, can I ask a question too? Is there a limitation of what the impact fees can be used for?
Well, I do want to allow Paige to come up and speak to that because she's more of an expert on it than I am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Denise. As you know, she does an amazing job speaking on behalf of the project and many other facets. And so she's really covered everything. But with regarding limitations, as is put forth in the draft CIE, that is a project-based document. So you're not going to find anything in the way of staff resources or maintenance projects. State law is very prescriptive in terms of how the funds can be spent. They can be collected for public facility categories and spent within those for capital projects. So think brick and mortar projects, heavy vehicles that have a service life of at least ten years, all sorts of recreation components, as was mentioned, different examples. But unfortunately, it can't pay to staff those additional fire stations that may be needed. It can't pay for maintenance projects to replace an aging basketball court, for example, wear and tear. But for those additional expenditures that are going to be needed to expand services to accommodate a growing population, that's where impact fees come in as a supplemental funding source.
And thank you so much. And the reason I'm asking, because that actually came up in 2016, I believe, was when we talked about, we had already passed a referendum in this case, and I talked about the impact fees. If you acquire, you know, we had already existing basketball court, and so at Duncan Park, just giving you an example. And so I was given several limitations that actually made the referendum a smart move. And thank God for the residents passing it overwhelmingly. So again, that's, that was a genesis of questions. I remember some of the few things we were talking about, as well as staffing as well in this case, because of the whatever program that we do execute with it. Again, we talked about the recreation center. You're talking about, members of council, you're talking about a staffing improvement increase that you'll have to have if, once that is manifested. So again, thank you so much for that information. Any other members of council got a question about this?
Nope.
Impact fee. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next agenda item, a resolution to adopt procedures for the transfer of budgeted funds and education and training for mayor and city council. This is a request to approve a resolution to adopt procedures for the transfer of budgeted line items designated for education and training for mayor and city council after the city's fiscal and mid-year budget has been approved and for other lawful related purposes.
Honorable mayor and council, I'm going to present this next item. I did have a procedural question. Was the last item voted on?
No, we didn't. We didn't have, we didn't take, we didn't take a vote. No, we didn't.
Right. We need to see council's will on the previous item.
Okay, let's do it.
Transmittal of the impact fee document as Ms. Brookins was explaining. There was a vote?
Ms. Hattie Portis Jones and, no, I'm sorry.
No, that was to close the hearing.
That was to close the hearing.
Yes, sir. So in this case, in this case, members of council, let me do this. Go ahead and take a vote for it. Members of council, you have, we're back on item number two, the capital improvement. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion cares. Okay.
Now proceeding with the next item with your permission, mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this item is to review and to present to council a review and approval of a resolution establishing procedures for the transfer of education and training budgeted funds between elected officials. During the FY 2526 proposed budget workshop presentation on Wednesday, August 6th, a request was made from council to staff to establish a process and procedures regarding the transfer of budgeted funds for education and training between elected officials. This policy follows that directive that we received from council. It essentially mirrors the process we've previously been using. The only new element to the process is if approved, this resolution will require final approval from council. The process largely mirrors, as I said, what we've previously done. A council member would say they needed additional funds. Another council member would be willing to provide those funds, and they would provide the documentation and we'd make the transfer. So the only difference here pursuant to the request we receive on August 6th is present this resolution for your consideration to add council approval to the already existing process.
Members of council, you have a four-year resolution to adopt procedural rules for the transfer of budgeted funds and education and training for mayor and council. Is there a motion?
Motion to deny. Second.
Any other members of council? No other, any comments? No comments?
I have comments.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, men.
Okay. Tonight's council meeting is about more than procedure. It's about control. A resolution is being introduced that will restrict how council members use their training and professional development budget. Let's set the record straight. We already lack oversight in many other areas where council has not been apprised to financial information. This issue should not be included. Instead of addressing those issues, this resolution was initiated by Councilwoman Linda Davis during our workshop, budget workshops. To me, we're clear bias to limit how council members can use their training funds. This isn't about protecting taxpayer dollars. It's about restricting independence and targeting certain members of council. This type of biased policymaking sets a dangerous precedent rather than empowering your elected officials to seek training that makes us stronger advocates for you. It strips us of discretion and concretes power in the hands of a few. And yes, we've seen that pattern before. Resolutions like this get rubber stamped to protect insider interests, not the public's. And so Fairburn doesn't need bias restriction. We need real budget oversight, transparency, and accountability. Until we fix the root problem, measures like this are nothing more than political maneuvers at the expense of the tax, at the expense of the taxpayer. I also want to point out that this is missing the mark because we need to put our focus and attention on the things that really matter. The troubling practices that this council has allowed to occur. This ordinance cannot be separate from a broader pattern of troubling governance failures. One, spoliation of public records by Mario Avery, who encouraged the staff, the chief of police, as well as the city manager, to destroy public records during discovery of open litigation. Removal of dedication plaques without council action. Misuse of executive session, delayed and withheld documents. Retaliation against council members by using procedural rules. Unresolved ethics and misuse of funds by hiring outside attorneys to investigate elected officials without council approval. Hiring of outside legal.
Point of order, point of order.
Order. You are out of order. I'm still within my debate time. You're out of order. You're trying to restrict my voice.
Outside of the.
I, no, 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 sir. I have the right to state my position. You may not like it, Mayor Avery, and I know it's very, I could stop the time. You may not like it, sir, but you don't get to stop me.
Go ahead.
He's wrong. He's out of order.
It's my point of order. Mr. City Attorney.
Let her finish.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
How much time is left?
He has to go back.
Two minutes.
No, 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 no. You waste up my time.
The timekeeper has the time.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'll let her finish.
When we not, when we don't focus on the business at hand and we're focusing on restricting elected officials, these are some very critical issues that have gone resolved by this council. The hiring of outside legal organizations without council approval. Special investigative meeting being abused, a special investigative meeting proceeding without a quorum. Nevertheless, participants went into executive session and voted to dismiss a complaint against Councilwoman Hattie Portis Jones. All of this was in clear public view, and it can be seen for yourself. And so to the, my colleagues, let's get off the petty train and let's get on the progress train. Because what we have before us right now is unfair government and complete avoidance of procedural rules. And so if you want to bring resolution to this council, let's do what's right. Stop trying to control individuals with petty politics. Talk about training and budgets. Councilman Smallwood, for the public, provided me with money to go to a utility conference because you wanted answers about your utility bills. You wanted to know why your utility bills were sky high. One of the things that his funding helped me to identify is that the Fairburn utility under the MIAC power, it's not the planning and how it's set up to run, it's not running efficiently. Meaning, capital improvement plans and economic development plans should be separate and apart from the city. This gives us a clear path forward on how we need to use our funds and revenue in the utility fund to build up infrastructure. So this is all about politics. This doesn't have to do anything with someone's training budget. You want to restrict. It's petty. And all the things that you have ignored, I am absolutely embarrassed to sit up here with this council because you, you, you look toward things that don't even matter. But this man is getting away with destroying records, and you've been quiet.
Thank you. It's my point of order in this case, in order. In this case, I was asking you to rule on my point of order.
Yes.
Okay, so.
There was a motion. There was a second. She had the floor. She finished. Now you can go ahead and vote on the motion.
Okay, well, in this case.
Unless there's more discussion.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms.
No, I, I thank you, ma'am. In reference to this resolution, during budgeting, I think of last year, council had an increase in their training and education budget to fifteen thousand each. One of our council members have more because they are on a national board, which calls for additional travel and everything else. That addition was brought back to the council for council to approve that increase in that particular colleague's budget. What I find that is inappropriate in reference to the taxpayers' dollars being given to our elected us to go for training and education for each individual council member, and it is voted on for all, for the other council members, fifteen thousand dollars a year. Now, I think is inappropriate for a council member to go to another council member and increase their training and education budget to almost nineteen thousand and reducing the other council member's budget appropriately. I think that we need to maintain the fifteen thousand and not switching and going to one council member to say, give me some money or whatever. If you need additional funding above that fifteen thousand, then it should come back to council so we can determine whether wherever you are going is going to be a benefit to the city, and you're not just traveling all over the United States of America because you have funds. So that is why I asked for a resolution for this. So we don't play with taxpayers' money by getting together with one another and swapping without it coming back to council. It needs to come back to council. I'm not saying that you may not need additional funds, but if you need more than fifteen thousand, then it needs to come back to council so we can determine where are you going? Is it, is, is it part of what you were elected to do? Or are you just take, going just willy-nilly? Now, that is the resolution that I asked for because I think that is appropriate.
I'd like to speak.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
All right. First of all, I'd like to address willy-nilly. First of all, the city administrator, when the request was made, asked for what the funds would be used for, an itemization of it. So it was the exact same process as if any of us were going to go to education. So first of all, willy-nilly was nowhere in the equation. Next, okay, this, you know me. Everybody knows me. There's no partiality. Anybody up here could have asked me for money that I had that was in addition, that may just go away because I work a full-time job, all right? So I can't get off to go to the trainings as some of our other council members can. So that's extra money that's just there, that's already budgeted for, that's just there. So to have to come back to council and they approve, well, it should be on that person who that money is budgeted for to say whether or not they want to do it. It should not have to come back to council because we see, I'll stay away from accusatory, but that's, that may or may not even pass. And this is for education. This is not to go to the beach. So I think as it has been referenced, we are getting into like some control. Okay, so, because, so it shouldn't be that it has to come back and then be approved by council. It should be whoever those people are, those council members, who have that money. If they have that money, if they would like to give that money to another council member for education, not willy-nilly, then that should be at the will of those council members. Again, that's my opinion because, like I said, we're going out into control. I yield.
Follow up. I think it's the audacity from me that you will sit on this dais and talk about willy-nilly with all that's going on in the city, and there's been no attention given to it from this dais. I think it's also a lot of nerve of you to think that you get to approve what an adult does that they are duly elected. And let's talk about this twenty-two thousand dollars for one member. I stood flat-footed on this dais and said, we are at-large council. That's what the language y'all like to use. That's what you was broad-beating me with when I came in here. You voted down a back-to-school flyer, told me that I was commingling funds. But yet, one council member gets twenty-two thousand dollars for what? You said you want to make sure that I'm going to training, but yet you ain't got not one report from the progress of the council member that's receiving the twenty-two thousand dollars for the NLC. No, you don't get to do that. It's counterproductive, and it's leaning toward control. You don't weaponize policies. We are duly elected. I don't know if someone missed their opportunity to parent their child. I pray that you get that back. But at this dais, you're not going to tell me how to use my training budget because it is tracked and traced by our finance department. We have ramp that guides the receipts in which we upload. The transaction that was made between me, myself and Mr. Smallwood, Councilman Smallwood, was guided through the city administrator office. Documentation to verify flight, hotel stay, and per diem was provided per the travel policy. So as far as I'm concerned, you don't have a leg to stand on. It's petty.
Has been, any other more comments? Has a motion on the floor been, has been properly seconded to deny? Was it to deny?
To deny.
Okay. A motion to deny has been made and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
No opposed.
Okay, gotcha. That motion. That motion cares. Next item.
Which is the motion that carried?
The motion to carry was a motion from Ms. Hudson made to deny.
No, it wasn't.
You don't have, you don't.
It wasn't.
We had, we had three to oppose, two to approve.
It was motion two. The motion on the table was to deny.
No, the motion was to deny.
And no other, no other motion came between them. Smallwood seconded it.
That's correct.
And we did a discussion.
And I asked. So it's been, it's the motion to deny was, did not carry. Not carry.
Did not carry.
That's right. And it failed.
It failed.
Okay, so I, that's why I say next item.
Don't worry, he's just going to be. No, that's wrong. I'm going to report it. I'm tired of this. They have to put up some subsequent motion. Don't, mm-mm.
In this case, is there sus, is there subsequent motion?
Subsequent motion is required. The vote was two, the vote was two to three and the three votes said, yes.
The motion to deny, you have to put up another motion.
You do not.
For approval.
You do not.
Where it denied.
It, it, no, no ma'am, no.
It's no worry.
Your motion failed.
It's, it's going to go away.
Ms., Ms. Ray, you, Ms. Ray, you want to clarify, from your perspective, what we're doing?
Well, I do know that we had two people make a motion to deny and three said.
To approve.
To approve.
There was, there was no motion to approve. There was no motion to deny.
Vote.
That failed. Do another motion to approve it if that's what you want to do. I'm asking, is there a motion now?
Motion to approve. Resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Uh-uh, you got a new motion and goes back to discussion. Can't do that.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay.
And let me, let's make sure, uh, we, privilege was allowed during the last discussion. There were, there was talk about spoliation of a case that's been settled some time now. I submit respectfully, Councilwoman Hudson, keep your discussion germane to the motion. I gave you privilege, I allowed it, but, and, and there were, there were, uh, you know, you, you.
Duly noted, sir. Can we move on?
Not done. And make sure you follow quorum and do not accuse people of stuff.
I didn't accuse anyone.
S U D.
It's a fact. It's a fact. Point of order. Who are you, first of all? You're going to, you're going to address me, right? No, I'm talking to the attorney. Patty needs to stop talking because she don't control this meeting.
She don't, and I'm asking you.
Thank you.
I'm asking you to get in order. I, I've said enough. Go ahead.
Thank you. Discussion. We're back to discussion.
Their motion, the motion has been made? Motion was made, I want to make sure the motion was made. Okay, who's second?
Second.
And I said discussion.
Okay, and it's a second, so now it's, now it's back, it's to the floor. In this case, go ahead, Ms. Hudson, yes.
Thank you to the public. I want you to see tonight how this council prioritized legislation. We're prioritizing, weaponizing rules and procedures, but no one is following them when it relates to holding them accountable. Where is fair government in Fairburn? Where is fair government when we have colleagues who sit and weaponize resources against you? Since I've been on this council, you have made me the focus of your governing. Not one of you have worked constructively to pass any policies to improve operations or have conversations that are productive. All you do is find ways to try to stop from being said what you don't want to hear. But today is a new day because for two years, I've tried to ask this council to do what is right, to avoid legal liability of this city. And for some reason, you all think that your actions doesn't bear consequences. Well, they will. And I'm going to say for the record, I am so grateful that we are ushering in a new council, a new government, where fresh ideas will be more prevalent than politricks and petty games. I yield.
All right, thank you. Members of council, in this case, go ahead, Ms.
Yes. I respectfully disagree with Councilwoman Hudson's statement and assertion that we have spent the last two years doing nothing. The evidence and the facts prove otherwise. There's a lot of positive activity and projects that we have approved that is happening in this city. The residents see it and they have commented on it and they are happy about it. We spent two days in a retreat. The only persons present were Mayor Avery, Councilwoman Davis, Councilman Heath, and myself. A retreat to do a strategic plan for the city. And the other three council members, over two days, didn't see it worth their while to participate, nor did they call out of respect to say that they would not be present, that something came up, which is what they were elected to do, is to be a part of this team, to be a part of the decision-making process. The retreat was just one of several things.
Point of order, are we talking about the agenda item or the retreat?
Secondly, we spent two days.
For the same privileges I gave you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. We spent two days. One day, almost to midnight, having a discussion about the fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six City of Fairburn budget. Two days. Six and eight hours per day. And a colleague has said that we passed the budget without any questions. Well, yes, because we had discussed that. We had posed all the questions. Staff responded to the questions that we had. That's why we had the budget hearings to do in-depth discussion. When it's ti, when it came to the agenda and time to vote, that's what was required, time to vote. And I'll close with this. Tonight, we talked about the City of Fairburn's communication plan. Is that positive? I think so. We also talked about the city's capital improvement element, talking about bringing in another source of revenue for the City of Fairburn called impact fees. Is that positive? I think so. And then we're going to hear about the city administrator's report. We're going to hear from the finance director about the status of our revenues and expenses. Is that positive? I think so. So to say that we don't do nothing, that we are all about irrelevant issues, is a total misstatement. But my colleague is well-known for that, well-known for that.
Point of order.
Quite good at it.
She don't have to, uh, address me. Yeah, thank you. I'll follow up.
Go ahead.
When it comes down to being productive, you don't sit on a dais for two years and hear your colleague asking for key financial information and do nothing to receive it. You don't get to dictate what people do with their time or how they serve in this community. The bottom line is, I don't owe you an explanation for where I was and why I wasn't there because my work is proven in this community. You talk about your time up here, you've been here twelve years and I still am looking for the grant funding that has been allocated to the city because of National League of Cities. But this conversation is about budget transmittal. Once again, out of the spirit of this resolution is biases and I'll stand ten toes down saying it. When I talk about the negativity, it's proof. There's nothing that I said has been a lie and everything has been followed with receipts. Behavior is everything. How you manage and how you engage in a time of conflict is pivotal. But I don't trust the colleagues on this dais and I am embarrassed to be among you because you have allowed so much to go unaddressed and unchecked in this ci, in this city to the point that it's just completely, completely a disgrace. I'm gonna, I'm gonna end here because I know that greater is coming and I know that sometimes the darkest times come before you see the bright. And I'm just waiting for those times and I'm celebrating.
I'll just, I'll just close with this as, as, as we take the motion. Ladies and gentlemen, I think again, may the work that I've done speak for me and this case, and, and this government as a whole. Again, other governors, uh, uh, other mayors and other representatives talked about all the positivity that the City of Fairburn has, even, even its, even its employees. Long story short, ladies and gentlemen, again, with this particular issue, I, during the budget hearing, I made, during the budget discussion, if, I made it clear that the members of council would ultimately decide whether they would allow, uh, more than fifteen thousand. I, I, I personally don't think it's a problem in this case. Uh, Ms. Hudson, I believe you, I believe you work, you serve on a board, something dealing with the Atlanta, Atlanta Regional Commission. And so long story short, my question to you was going to be, I was waiting on you to finally ask the council for X whatever dollars if that's needed for you to go to whatever additional training outside of the standard fifteen thousand, but we ain't got that request yet. So in my mind, there's no difference between the National League of Cities, whether Ms. Davis on GMA or you on ARC. In my mind, uh, members of council should get the same amount until, unless you got the circumstances, in this case, that would allocate, allocate additional funding based on the need. In this case, uh, if the ARC is needed, you bid on that board. I don't have an issue with it, but that's my perspective on it. So, members of council, we've already got.
Respeak the vote, please.
Real, real quick, real, real quick. I want to say this to you. Let's not make excuses about this. If you said that you're okay with us having the same amount, then everybody should have had twenty-two thousand last year.
Okay.
That's my position.
Okay.
And, and, and I'm glad that you said that on the record.
Right.
Everybody need to have twenty-two thousand. We are at-large council. If it don't get used, it don't get used. But members of this council should not be dictating what happened with no one's finances.
Has a motion been made, is.
Do you restate the motion, please?
Motion is to approve, right?
Restate the motion, please.
Move to deny.
Hold on, go ahead, the motion, go ahead, Ms., uh, they've already had a motion.
Hold on one second. The motion was to approve the transfer of budgeted items in education and training for mayor and council by resolution.
Okay. And, and that was, it was second. Is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
That motion cares. Next item.
Next item is number four, water and sewer emergency repair ratifications. The recommendation is for mayor and council to approve the pay, to pay the invoices for GS construction for emergency repair work to a water meter and service laterals at various locations around the city in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman.
Good afternoon.
As Ms. Ray said, we were here to bring before you a kind of a summary of four different emergency repairs that happened that were outside of, uh, the scope of what our forces could do here at the city with our own employees. Uh, also, they were after hours. Most of them were, uh, required cutting and repairing the streets or crossing the streets, things of that nature. The total for the four locations was ninety-five thousand dollars, um, which supersedes, uh, Ms. Phillips' ability to approve. So I wanted to bring them to you, four repairs. You can see on the screen, they were pretty substantial, um, leaks that had to be repaired. So due to the amount, we want to bring this before you for ratification for these invoices for GS construction.
Okay. Members of council, you have before you a water sewer emergency repair ratification. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made, incoming, by council.
Yes, I have some questions.
Just go ahead.
Today, uh, I want to know about the capital improvement plan for utilities. I know during the budget, uh, you've mentioned that we have these conversations about it, but there's nothing in writing for the council to see, an economic development plan. But you're very familiar with the MEAC setup, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And the budget planning process for utilities.
Yes, ma'am.
So what I haven't seen in the budget process was that for utilities, specifically with what projects are going to be focused on in its entirety.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I, I have submitted, uh, so actually I thought I submitted it last week and I saw Ms. Chris today and I asked for her feedback on it and realized it was sitting in my outbox. It never went. So she just got it today as well as Ms. Phillips. So you will be getting that very soon with a list of water projects and a separate list of the electric capital projects.
Also, I did request a copy of the rate analysis, Mr. Phillips. Two weeks ago, I still didn't get it. You said it was on the website. I couldn't find it, uh, because that's important because residents are really struggling in this community to pay their utility bills. And I just think that, for, I have a two-fold idea about this. You know what's necessary and you have to get it done, but how you get it done can really impact. So change management is very important in this process. And that's one of the things that we are dealing with currently. I don't know how many members on this dais is, uh, utilities are here at Fairburn and water, but I have electric and water. And my bills are running five hundred to six hundred dollars a month. And so when we look at the rate analysis, I want to know from what level did we view where that increase should start? That's important.
Okay, I can. I will email the rate analysis that was approved by council directly to you, Ms. Hudson, so you don't have to look for it on the website. I'll email it directly to you. On the capital improvement discussion, in the budget as approved by council, and you will get this document, the entire council, by email, it includes fifteen separate capital projects for electricity and four separate capital projects for water that's in the budget as approved. So I'll email this document to the entire board, uh, the entire council as well. Uh, and so I'll make sure that both of those documents are available, both the rate analysis, which was done for electricity by ECG, a statewide agency that works with all utility cities. And we had an engineering firm to do the water analysis, separate from the city, an independent firm did an engineering analysis on our water rates, and I'll provide both of those studies to the entire council as well.
Now, meter readings and meter replacements, where are we with that project?
So, uh, the electric, uh, portion, they're getting ready to install five hundred more. I think they may have started this week or next week. That would put them, I think, a little over fifty percent and water's around, I think, seventy percent.
Do we see a decrease in utility bills with new meters or the new meters is for proficiency in, uh, reading the rate that we have now?
So two benefits to the new meters, they're actually more accurate than the old meters. So what you see, the, the old mechanical style meters that we used to have, they had gears and, and things in them that over time they wear out and they actually slow down. So the old meters are actually losing the city money because they were not reading all of the water that were going through them. So the new meters are actually, they use a, a, what's called a magnetic field to read the water going through them, which measures down to the gallon, whereas the old meters measured down to, I believe, the ten-gallon mark. They got down to the one-gallon mark. So these are way more, uh, uh, accurate. And they also give us the ability, once the system's in place, to get real-time information. So currently, right now, if you have a question, it's like, what's going on with my water? Where am I seeing this, 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 uh, increase in usage? Uh, we can go into the system and pull that meter, which we'll report every hour. And it's, I, I don't know if you've ever had one of what we call a hockey puck, a little recorder they put in there that gives you the data, but instead of doing that, we'll be able to talk to that meter directly, pull it up and see hourly, uh, information on what's going. And that's the same thing for electric meters and water meters. So you can literally see, if you come home and start washing clothes, you'll get a little chart and it'll show you increase in things. So it, it helps people see what times of day they peak usage and things like that. So it helps people see what times of day they peak usage and things of that nature.
I think it will be helpful to make sure council has a phased project report as this, as you roll out this, these projects and it phases in a completion. I think that's, that is good, because in real time, if we are receiving complaints and concerns from residents, we have something in real time to share with them. And I don't have to call Mr. Phillips in the middle of something when a resident is panicking about their light bill. So I think that communication is key when it comes to that. So if you have these major projects that you're embarking up on, you can give us a phased report. It doesn't have to be weekly, but I will say at least monthly. Or if something new comes out, hey, I want to give you guys a heads up that we're making great progress in this area here. So if customers impacted by that issue in that area, guess what we can report to them? They're on it, okay? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And one of the things we talked about that will start to be included in Ms. Phillips' reports, we're changing the formatting, cleaning it up a little bit. So that'd be one of the things, starting October, we will start.
And to your suggestion, Councilwoman Hudson, every city administrator's report moving forward each month will have an update on the meter replacement project on where we are, so you'll get that at least monthly.
Okay, make sure you put it in those areas, like the geographical area it is.
Understood.
So like when y'all give us these nice photos, make it so we can tell them, yeah, they did it over here.
Yes, ma'am. Understood.
Any other members of council got a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is number five, resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the city of Fairburn and Buttermilk Biscuit Fairburn LLC for the train depot. This is a recommendation from mayor and council to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the commercial lease agreement with Buttermilk Biscuit Fairburn LLC for the train depot located at seven Southwest Broad Street, Fairburn.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll be presenting this item, Ms. Abernathy needed to be excused. As you recall, council has previously approved the selection of Buttermilk Biscuits as the selected vendor for the train depot. And so we are glad and excited to bring forth to you the final agreement negotiated between the parties for your approval. It is a standard tenant agreement and it's been reviewed by legal. It includes paying the rent, property taxes and maintenance and repairs. Tenant bears much of the maintenance of the property. And so this agreement is presented for your agreement, for your possible approval. And both Buttermilk Biscuit and the city have reviewed it for appropriateness and compliance. And so it is now presented to you for final approval.
Okay. Members of council, you have before your resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for the city of Fairburn and Buttermilk Biscuit LLC for the train depot. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion is made and probably second by Mr. Heath. Any questions or comments by council?
Yes, I, I'm excited about this restaurant coming. I was disappointed that they were delayed in the opening, because when they presented to us, we were expecting late July, early August for the opening. But I understand this is an additional location and that they had to address some issues with other locations. But they are committed to be here and we really appreciate that. And I've heard numerous residents talk about how excited they are about the restaurant coming, so we look forward to their opening.
Any other councilmen? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries.
The next item is the finance director monthly report.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I'll be presenting the finance report for the period ended August twenty, twenty twenty-five. The revenue, as at the end of August, exited expenditures by six point one million. And yet to date, general fund revenue received was three point, thirty-three point three million, while the expenditure disbursed was twenty-seven point two million. As at, as at the end of August twenty twenty-five, the city has collected eighty-seven percent of the budgeted revenue and as against seventy-one point one percent of the budgeted expenditure. On the next sheet, you should see a breakdown of the revenue for the period compared to the same period for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Further down, you should see, excuse me, revenue projection for each revenue item compared to, I mean, the budgeted revenue for twenty twenty-five, the month-to-date collection, year-to-date collection and the percentage of the year-to-date collection compared to that of the budgeted revenue. For the expenditure for the general fund as well, we have the budgeted amount, the month-to-date, year-to-date and the percentage of the year-to-date compared to that of the budgeted expenditure. Next, we have the enterprise fund for the period and for, as at the end of August twenty twenty-five. The city's enterprise fund, as at the end of August, revenue exited expenditure by one point one million. Year-to-date, the enterprise fund revenue so far collected was twenty-three point six million and expenditure disbursed was twenty-two point five million. As at the end of August, the city had collected seventy-seven percent of the budgeted revenue as against seventy-five percent of the budgeted expenditure. And on the next sheet, we have the comparison of revenue collected for water, water sewer, stormwater, electricity and sanitation. And as against the expenditures for the same period. You will notice that the expenditure, the total revenue over expenditure at the bottom was one point one million. So the revenue is over expenditure by one point one million. And on the next sheet, we have a two-year comparison, that is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four period compared to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five period. And at the, at the bottom, you should see that the revenue over expenditure for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was three point three eight million. And compared to the same period, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five was twenty-one point, approximately twenty-one point one million. I'll take any questions.
Members of council, any member of council has a question about this? Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Yes, so thank you for the report. And the report is through August. And so our fiscal year ends September thirtieth. And we will be in the new fiscal year, yet there will be revenues and expenses associated with this fiscal year.
Right.
So could you talk a little bit about our closeout process? How long that takes? And we will, the process goes through sometimes December, is that not correct?
Correct.
And so you could just talk a little bit about that process?
When I came aboard, our reconciliation process was behind by three months. As at yesterday, we have caught up and we, and as I, when, when I came aboard, the reconciliation period was dragging on to the sixteenth of each month and sometimes to the twentieth. Right now, we have caught up and we are able to close each month by the tenth of, by the tenth of each month. But we, we're still trying to reconcile the process with the utilities department because there are a few areas that needs, still needs to be smoothed and we're working on that. But hopefully by the turn of the fiscal year, we should be able to close each month by, on the tenth of each month, each month's financial report on the tenth of the preceding month.
Okay, well, congratulations on shortening the reconciliation days. That, that is significant and very important. That being said then, how or when will we close out the, this fiscal year?
The fiscal year closing process usually by, considering the rate at which we're going, I'm assuming that, just an assumption, that by the end of November, we should be able to close the fiscal year and invite the auditors to come on a field visit and, and examine our records.
That's, that's great news, because we've been delayed in getting the audit done for the previous fiscal year, so that is good news. Mr. Phillips, if you could just comment about, since our finance director is relatively new, could you just comment about the process and the improvements that we have made? And when do you anticipate this fiscal year, the books for this fiscal year to close?
Absolutely, thank you very much, Councilwoman Portis-Jones. So we implement a number of internal measures to assist and aid in an efficient year-end closeout. That begins with the monthly closeout that our finance director has already referenced. But we also have a year-end closing schedule that is distributed to all departments to make sure invoices are in on a timely manner, make sure that all expenditures are addressed in a timely manner. That feeds into us being able to close out the entire year. Being able to close out the entire year within thirty, four to six weeks after the closing of a fiscal year for a budget our size is a reasonable timeframe. And assuming we can make that date and get that closed out in November, as the finance director has a goal to do, then we would then proceed to the audit process, which then defers to Maudlin and Jenkins. And how long Maudlin and Jenkins takes to complete that can vary based on what their process is. We do some audit prep work at the close of the closeout year. We use an independent accountant to help us prepare for the audit. And so that process can take a number of weeks, but it's not because of a delayed closeout, it's just the audit process. And so we would defer to Maudlin and Jenkins and when they conclude their work, that's when that final audit presentation comes back to council.
Yes, and thank you for that. And so I'd ask if in your November report, if you could provide us a status update of where we are on the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five closeout.
Ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, just, just so I'll be clear? The city's credit rating right now?
Credit rating right now is double A minus.
Okay, would you, that's equivalent to a what? If a personal credit score, what?
I don't know if there's a.
I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying, I'm trying to make it sense to people.
Double A is a good, better score. I don't know how we could.
Double A is a good score, but it says double A minus.
Minus.
That's, there's a caveat there. And that, frankly speaking, that scares off investors when you have minus to A. Triple A is very good. Triple A plus is good, double A plus is good as well. When you have a double A minus.
Bottom line, the credit rating is good. Go ahead, sir.
So when we went through the bond process for both the public safety facility and the utility improvements earlier this year.
Correct.
Going through that bond process, the bond rating agencies gave us the double A minus rating. The sole factor that they pointed to as a point of concern was that the city had gone twelve years without raising its utility rates. And they saw that as not being fiscally appropriate.
As possible.
Because in a twelve-year span, obviously your cost of increase. They did not downrate it significantly, because by the time they got to the bond process, this council had implemented a rate increase in December of twenty twenty-three. So they noted that in the process. It says it looks like the city is now addressing that issue and that over the next year, if you recall, we had a discussion in December of twenty twenty-three. When I arrived here, the enterprise fund was in a deficit. That's why you see that. When I got here, enterprise fund was spending more money than it was making, largely because the rates had not been adjusted in over a decade. Everything costs more over time. And then if you have a ten-year, well, in our instance, a twelve-year span, that's what caused that issue. We had an in-depth discussion about that. We had representatives from MEAG, we had representatives from ECG, talked in depth about that. And the council made its decision on the rate increases. But that was one of the issues that was cited that has since been rectified through the vote of council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is going to be the city administrator's monthly report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I, as I am each month, I'm excited to present to you a brief summary of the August city administrators' reports, which create, contains individual department reports from every operating department in the city. Hopefully you've had the time to review that information. It is also publicly posted to the website each month, including all of the previous reports and the current report as well. A few brief highlights. One, I am always honored and grateful to work with a very talented group of men and women who serve on the staff of the city of Fairburn and want to start by making that acknowledgement from our public safety professionals, who are always doing a good job, to all of our employees who work each day to benefit the residents of Fairburn. In terms of accomplishments in the month of August, in infrastructure, we completed the installation of the generator at one or two Howell Avenue. That facility advanced its operational readiness. I believe that is the fourth generator we've installed in the last three years. Those generators allow operating departments to continue to serve residents in the instance of weather challenges, power outages. We can still provide basic services. In communications, our very capable communication department finalized the fall festival marketing framework, launched vendor recruitment, expanded social media promotion and coordinated internal, external outreach for the very successful Fuego Fest that was held on this past Friday. In economic development, we partnered with the airport district alliance to establish the city of Fairburn's DMO destination marketing organization. Thank you to council for your approval of that partnership. It should lead to increased tourism and hotel rooms and things of that nature, also the generating of additional revenue as the state legislature approved us moving from three percent to eight percent, which does require a DMO in place. And so council's approval helped us successfully fulfill that state mandated requirement. The fire department, I, we are very proud to announce, achieved a flawless Georgia Firefighter Standards and Training Council audit. They received superior ratings across the board, demonstrating a state compliance, professional readiness and a strong culture of safety and preparedness. This continues a strong track record for outstanding Fairburn Fire Department. Parks and Recreation continued their forward-leaning programming specifically for seniors, among youth as well. They hosted engaging programs for seniors, including our Sensational Seniors Program, a self-defense class on August first, just say hello on August twelfth. And finally, the pickleball team kicked off on August fourteenth. And I will pause there. Hopefully you've had a chance to review the report. Those are just a few of the highlights from August of twenty twenty-five.
Any other member of council, go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Yes, I did have an opportunity to review the report. First of all, I like and appreciate the format and it's very easy to read and easy to capture the accomplishments. What, what I didn't see in here, and we've talked about that tonight. What, um, what I didn't see in here, uh, and we've talked about that, uh, tonight, and that is the extensive time and effort of the staff to prepare our fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, budget. That cannot be overstated, uh, because it was a lot of work that went into it, and not only in them doing the work, the pre-work that you required, uh, and discussions with you, but also in developing the reports that were presented to mayor and council and the, uh, time that it took for them to do that. I want to commend every, every department head and the work that they did in putting those reports together, uh, and in responding to the questions that we had regarding the fiscal year, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I think, uh, they did a phenomenal job, uh, in doing that. Uh, and again, because they were able to respond to the questions and concerns that we had, that, um, we were able to then approve that budget. So, uh, I was looking for that in your report. Uh, I did not see that, but I want to elevate and say, uh, thank you and the team, uh, all the staff. I know the department heads were here presenting, but it was their staff that helped in preparation to the port, in preparation of the reports. So, thank you to the entire team for that. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Portis Jones. I will try to make more detailed reference to that. The budget hearings that take place in August, departments begin preparing for that in May of every year. And so, there are months of work that goes into that before it gets to this council that's required and necessary, a lot of due diligence. We meet with every department. It takes the better part of a week to meet with all thirteen departments because we go through the budget line by line. And I can't give enough, uh, credit, as you just did, Councilwoman Portis Jones, to all of our staff. They really do the hard work of preparing that budget so that when it gets to August, there's a lot of work that's going into it. And so, I'll make it a point to ensure that that behind-the-scenes effort, uh, is more publicly acknowledged because it is significant and it takes a lot of hard work and number crunching. And, and I'm just really grateful to a staff that puts in that hard work.
And please let them all know, um, how much we appreciated the effort.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other members of council? Seeing that, I'll go to, I'll go to council comments. In this case, I'll start with Mr. Heath.
Um, basically, uh, I just would like to say that I appreciate the fact that, uh, I have served on the council now for sixteen years. I was a police officer twenty-five years altogether. So, a total of forty-one years of public service that I've given to, to the community as well as, uh, other communities that I worked at. And I just, uh, want to say at this point, thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to have served you and everything, but I'm not running again. I'm seventy-five years old and I've been told that I'm an old man, so, uh, I guess the best thing to do is to, uh, go to the happy hunting ground. Uh, you know, the Bible says, "The days of a righteous man is threescore and ten," which is seventy. So, I'm living in grace right now.
All right now.
And I just, uh, appreciate the fact that, uh, y'all gave me the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say congratulations to our fire department. Awesome. Way to go. We're so proud of you. So, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Smallwood?
No comments.
Ms. Henson?
Yes. What we've heard tonight is defense, not accountability. And defense in the face of spoliation is an admission all its own. When records disappear or are destroyed, the law is clear. That is spoliation. Doesn't matter when it happened, doesn't matter how it happened, it matters that it happened. When it's excused or unexplained away instead of corrected, it's not just bias, it's obstruction. People don't want cover stories. They want accountability. They want the truth preserved, not erased. And when government chooses to defend itself rather than answer to the public, it proves exactly why trust has been broken. History will not remember the excuses. It will remember the silence, the missing records, and the refusal to stand in light of accountability. I want to give a quick shout-out to Mr. Phillips for your quick response to me about that real serious issue over there at the Magnolia that was dead on. Uh, I, I just asked that you keep in touch with, um, that resident, that there's some serious things going on there. And so, I just want you to know your work. How many times did I call you that week? It was something, twice, but on a Saturday, he answered, uh, very quickly and we got a dispatch. There's room to grow in how we manage our contractors that come into our community as well as making sure that we root out bad actors. And so, that was a good thing, but we had some bad acting. Not everybody that probably that was a part of that project was, but the oversight is noted that it wasn't there. So, we have to make sure that we improve that because it minimizes the liability on us as is we know now. Okay.
Ms. Jones?
Um, yes, I just also want to congratulate the fire department. I am not surprised, uh, it, they are being consistent with the outstanding service that they provide, uh, and outstanding, um, operations. And that's why they receive awards like they did, um, tonight. It is consistent with the number-one ISO rating that our fire department has. Um, and because of that ISO rating, it, um, our homeowner's insurance is evaluated, um, to be less costly because of the fire services that we provided. So, that is consistent with it. Um, it is consistent with the opening of Fire Station Twenty-three as well, and the plans for the, uh, Public Safety Complex on Burlingbe Smith. So, uh, congratulations to them. Uh, but they are one of all of the departments, uh, who do, do an outstanding job for our city. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to mention, uh, in this case, uh, uh, members of the public, please don't forget October the fourth, uh, the Fairburn Fall Festival is going to be a great event. Want to, uh, uh, say congratulations to the VFW that had a great health fair this past weekend, uh, here at Dunkin' Park was awesome. And then, uh, a great, uh, Hispanic Heritage. Let me thank the staff publicly for getting that preparation, getting that whole venue ready for the Hispanic Heritage. Uh, it was a, it turned out to be a great event. And so, I just want to thank the staff publicly because, uh, again, it was beautiful. Uh, as relates to the budget preparation, I won't repeat, in this case, I want to thank Ms. Jones for the, uh, confirm, confirmation of what the staff did as a person that literally sat almost five hours last week preparing a budget for, for the county government, the division I'm managing. And so, again, uh, ladies and gentlemen, that's not a small feat in the midst, in the light, uh, of, uh, between inflation, between all type of federal, uh, rejection of, of federal money that's being lost. Again, uh, in spite of that, and then, uh, several bills through the House, State House, in this case, that's, uh, has a lot of our governments sweating bullets. Again, the city of Fairburn right now was in position to be, uh, prepared, in this case, to, for the, what would have, should have been a setback for most cities. Again, I want to actually thank every member of council that helped us get through it, including Mr. Whitmore, who was part of this body at that time when we basically passed that budget. So, again, I want to thank all the members of council that we passed this budget, uh, as you just heard, in this case, with a, uh, double A minus, in this case, uh, again, with which is a great credit rating compared to some of the other agencies around us. So, again, I personally said thank you so much because, again, your, your reflection, your credit score is a reflection of how you manage your money. It's just that cut and dry. And so, with that being said, can I entertain a motion to go an executive session for a, uh, litigation?
Yes, before we go into executive session, I've got a quick statement.
Yes, sir.
As the city attorney, I would be remiss if I allow the record to remain as it is. I want to be real abundantly clear to each member on this dais, as well as to the members of the public. There's no active or closed litigation where the mayor, the city administrator, or the police chief spoiled evidence. There's no record of that. No judge has ever ruled or found. It's a mere allegation. That's what the record shows. Now, we can go on to executive session.
Can I entertain a motion? Can I entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor, CI?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you.[1213.98]
Rest.
Rest.
...
Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Spohwood, second by Mr. Heath. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion cares. In this case, we'll start with our agenda item one. City clerk?
The number eight.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to read the motion.
Yeah, you can read it, yes ma'am.
I didn't get that. The motion is to waive the attorney-client privilege and release the investigation of the verbal outburst during the May 12, 2025 executive session.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
No.
Aye.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. Well, you gotta put something on the record. Okay, for the record, verbatim, Madam Clerk, the report that is being made public with the third-party investigative firm by Mullins was, this investigation was conducted without approval or vote from counsel, which means taxpayer dollars were used and we did not vote on them. That's it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
That motion cares. The second item?
The second item is going to be the plan of defense. Counsel will make a motion to table this until October 13 regular scheduled meeting.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in pro-
This will be to me within three days, three business days.
Who was the person that made the motion?
Ms. Hudson and then Ms. Davis. Seconding it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion cares.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion cares.